For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Caprio. Councilor Dooty.
Here.
Councilor Esposito.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Pucci. Councilor Muntzer.
May I have a motion to approve the May 1st, 2012 Regular WPCA and Town Council meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Dooty. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Abstained.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Abstained.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Muntzer.
Yes.
May I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the May 15th special meeting in the Town Manager's Office?
Second.
I'm sorry, it was May 10th. Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the May 10th special meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Abstained.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Regular Town Council Agenda. Item 3, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. A Permanent Project Building Committee.
Building Committee met last night, and in regards to the STW project, we need to obtain some additional information in regards to the boiler, the heating work, additional heating work that may need to be done. And there has also been some additional input from Park and Rec that we need to look at the floor plant, the layout of it, and so the architect is going to do some additional work and some in the bid specs to do it as add-ons, so that when we get the costs back, we can determine if we can do that work or not. And then there will be a special meeting set up probably sometime in about two weeks or so. And that's it as far as STW.
Thank you, Rose. Item B, Pension Committee.
Pension Committee met last week, and basically they have two new members from the police, one from the Police Department, one from the Fire Department, I guess. Mr. Officer Newfield from the Police and Mr. Cuny are from the Fire Department. The committee also updated us regarding the pension. Christopher Manor, a police sergeant, he chose the life-only annuity. And then we had, and Pat Burr also retired, Phyllis Stumpy also retired. And a motion was made to approve the pension request of Phyllis Stumpy and the other two. The committee also approved the pension request of Officer Leonard Papalizio effective August 1st, 2012. And Sherry Ardine from the Board of Ed effective September 1st, 2012. And Avery Drew had two areas of concern which he focused in on, both of which focused on reducing the overall risk of the pension investments, as well as investigating in areas that he felt were poised to experience growth. The emerging markets, he discussed something about the emerging markets, and he felt we should invest another 10 percent in the purchase of the Emerging Markets Opportunity Fund, which the committee approved. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Troy.
Before we get off the report on the pension, just gonna throw this out there, if maybe at a future meeting, we could have somebody, whether it's Anthony or pick a person that's the right one, could come explain how all the different pensions work in the town for all the different employees. Because it seems like there's several different types running, and some people are on the old, some are on the new. You know, some of us want to get some new. So, you know, I've been involved here like 18 years, and I don't have a clue.
I think Anthony has a pretty good handle on that.
Great. So maybe we'll put it on the, you know, an agenda that's light, and just kind of go down, you know, so they'll tell us what, you know, people in Town Hall, how that works, people at Public Works, the Fire Department pension, and the Police pension, and just kind of spell it out for us.
We could also do a, I think you've done this already at some point, matrix of what plan looks like what and who gets what, defined contribution versus defined benefit and so forth. We'll get you that in advance, so you have a chance to look at it, and then ask some questions.
Yeah, I'm only one, unless everyone else is fine with it.
I think that'd be very good. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay. If nobody objects, I had asked State Representative Vincent Candy Laura to come in this evening, and I know he's got another engagement. I'm gonna move him up on the agenda to come up and give us just a brief overview of the last session, and also to go in maybe some little detail on the steep grant and thank him for that you got for our town. Do I need to amend the agenda to move him up?
No.
Is that fine?
Good evening, and thanks for having me today. What I'm just handing out to you is just some of the bills that passed the General Assembly. Mostly all of these items are awaiting the Governor's signature, but I just wanted to give you sort of an update of where we are right now, and in particular, some of the issues, I think, that affect North Branford in particular. As the mayor mentioned, we were added on for an additional steep grant for the relocation of Wall Field in the amount of $350,000. There was some additional money left in the last steep grant awards from last fiscal year. So this wasn't any new money or any steep award for the outgoing years. It was actually money left from the budget year, fiscal year 12. And the point in that, I guess, is that we'll probably have another round opening up in July, which the town should be thinking about to make application for, and we would still have the ability to go in that round. What I handed you is just a cover page of the major acts, which are the summaries. I didn't want to print it out, because it's a lot of pages, but it has a web address that you can go to and look at the different areas of the laws that were affected. I also handed a couple of bills that were passed. One is the school construction grant, which included the repairs for the North Branford roof project. So last year, I know we had to do it on emergency basis and get that roof repaired quickly, which made it impossible for us to be able to follow the state procedure. This bill basically will exempt us from putting the project out to bid prior to making the application with the state, and so therefore, we would be unable to go through state reimbursement for that money. And that bill does await the Governor's signature. The other piece of legislation that was passed that we sort of snuck in late, but is dealing with the issue of the expansion of municipal electric utilities. What's gonna happen right now is the legislature voted to open up a docket with PURA, which is the regulatory body for electricity. And that group is going to look at the expansion of municipal services. I think the significance of this is that because half of North Branford is serviced by Wallingford Electric, it's our opportunity to advocate for us to be serviced by Wallingford Electric for the entire town to move into that system. Because right now, I think North Branford is unique from any other town in the state, in that we're serviced by three electric companies. We have UI, CLMP, and Wallingford Electric. And what we saw in the storm Irene is it's a little bit more difficult and challenging for us to coordinate all of those emergency services with those companies. And so I think there's an opportunity here for us to advocate our position that we really should be under one electric authority. And I think Wallingford would be amenable to looking at possible expansion. So this is gonna be on PURA's docket, and I'll keep the council informed, because I think we should probably get people there to testify to that, if you decide that that's an option that we want to utilize. And then lastly, I handed out a document that was prepared by our House Republican Caucus, which summarizes some of the bills from our perspective of what we liked, what we didn't like, and what maybe we're neutral to. I think overall, probably the one in particular issue that we need to look at always is the budget. We did make budget adjustments this year. The state was facing about a $220 million deficit. To make a long story short, we filled that deficit in with a one-shot by withholding payment of surplus funds that were supposed to be paid on debt service. So we sort of took a reserve, and we're filling in a hole in this year's budget. What that's gonna do for next year is create about a roughly almost a billion-dollar hole for the state going into next year's budget. So there are still challenges ahead. It wasn't a measure certainly that I supported. I think the state is still gonna need to look at making cuts to make ends meet. Municipal services and municipal financial assistance has been left intact. And for ECS right now, with the education bill, it was Senate Bill 458, that does increase our education funding. I think it was about $208,000 that the town will receive in new funding on the education side. So overall, I think it was a good session for North Branford. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Any idea if Wallingford were to take over service townwide? I assume they'd have to compensate UI for the power grid in town, and how would that impact the ratepayers?
Right. It wouldn't be an easy thing, because essentially, UI owns all the poles and equipment, so it would be almost an eminent domain where they would have to take it and pay for it, build it into their capital. That's something that PURA would have to look at and determine. You know, number one, would UI be amenable to it? And two, would it fiscally make sense to do in the long run, you know, for the town? Obviously, municipal services are lower in general, so I think it would behoove us to take a look at. But it's not an easy slam dunk process. There's certainly costs involved. And I think just one other thing to mention, we also was able to pass a mercury thermostat recycling program. Senator Meyer had helped Champion get it through the Senate, and we were able to get it through the House. The significance of it is that it was something that Honeywell, manufacturer advocated for and had needed. So I think for a business in our community, that was another good program that got put into place. It avoided a more draconian proposal that was being pushed by some environmentalists to create a bounty system, where if people turned in mercury thermostats, the manufacturer would have to pay, you know, X amount of money to recycle them. This puts the recycling program in the hands of the manufacturer, where they can manufacture. And so that, I thought, was a good step that the legislature did, because it certainly prevents, you know, any negative impact to a business in the community.
Yeah, I just want to say, Ben, you're doing a great job up there, and the town's definitely fortunate to have you in our corner up there. Keep up the good work.
I appreciate it.
And thank you for helping with the steep grant. That means a lot to Wall Field.
Well, I think, and I think it was a, it was a, you know, an easier sell, because it is as a result of the state relocating 139. So I think if the state is gonna cause us to lose Wall Field, they certainly should step up and pay for the relocation. So I was glad that the governor recognized that and gave us that award.
Then the other thing, the legislation for the, to, you know, it's almost like it was written for North Branford, for the high school roof. I mean, that's a good job.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, it's not atypical. If you print out the whole bill, every year there's, you know, a dozen communities that face that issue, where there's a technical fix that needs to be made. So, you know, frankly, that is usually a more easy process to go through. And if it gets hung up, it's more on procedural grounds and substantive. So there are many other towns that made that type of request. And it was just good, actually, that the town got all their paperwork in order to make that happen. So.
Thank you.
Richard?
I was just gonna comment on the Swatchick and the Wall Field project, and we had submitted budget information to the state representative. And based on what we had projected, we had an $800,000 plus or minus budget of funds available, but an expense projection at $1.1 million plus or minus. So we're now able to do everything that was on the list of things that the council and the Parks and Rec Commission and the community wanted to accomplish at this location. And we can, it's just a matter of logistics now in coordinating that grant award with our other grants, grant awards, which is a, that's a pleasurable process to go through. So we very appreciate it.
It was worth it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna bounce back. I believe we're at Item C, Finance Subcommittee. Rose, you're up.
Finance Committee met last Wednesday, and there are several items in our packet tonight. Of course, we talked about the grant that State Representative Vinnie Candy Laura just spoke about. And then we also, the status of the bids, there was bid opening yesterday on the trash contract, which we'll talk about later in the agenda. And on appropriation transfers tonight, the largest one is in the Fire Department, and that is for the way they budget for the pensions that are received. And we took care of that next year by dividing that up. So we shouldn't see that big of a swing next year. And also, later on in the agenda, is the appointment of the auditor. It's the last year of the bid, and there was a breakdown of when they did go out to bid, we saved substantial money by going with Lovitzky and Bernie. So this is the fifth year for the auditor. And then also, we talked about the road improvement program, and Franny was at the meeting and brought us up to date on that. That was it.
Thank you, Rose. Item D, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee.
Mayor, I did not attend this past week's committee meeting.
Item E, Economic Development Commission. I don't believe that met.
That didn't happen.
Right. Item F, Emergency Communications Subcommittee.
We didn't meet, but a big part of that was the increase in the 911 fee from 50 cents to 75 cents, which certainly helps our project, our emergency communications project move along.
This is with the whole CMed deal and all that, too?
Yes.
Have you talked to Joan Hilliard at all, up in Hartford?
Yes, I talked to Joan.
You did talk to her?
Yeah.
And she said there's no problem with going ahead with CMed?
She says as long as the police chief signs off on it, there's no problem going along with CMed. And as long as they're trained and they sign any warrants.
Okay. I think, I don't know, I'm not sure about this whole CMed deal. I think I want to talk to Joan Hilliard, to be honest with you, to make sure. And I'm not really crazy about having a dark police station either.
If I could just comment, Mr. Mayor, through you, the request has been made through the Deputy Commissioner of Homeland Security and Emergency Management at the state, who Joan Hilliard works for, for Ms. Hilliard to prepare a written document for the town's review on what the processes are.
So we're gonna know exactly what we can do and what we can't do?
In writing.
Okay, that's what I want, because I want to know, in writing, what exactly is going on.
I believe what she will produce, to my knowledge, will be what Councilmember Dooty expressed.
Okay.
That requires permission.
As long as I see it in writing, with her signature on it, I'll be happy.
We're working on that. I hope to see something in the next week to send it.
Okay. All right, other questions? Okay. Thanks, Mike. Item G, Potato and Corn Festival.
I can just report, the subcommittees are continuing to meet. The entertainment committee has booked its entertainment. We have made arrangements with the carnival vendor to once again keep the prices the same. But we've changed the arrangement on cash transfers, so there's no cash. Anthony and I met with Chuck Reed last week, and we resolved any issues that were lingering in our minds on management. Fireworks will go off again at the same rate and by the same company, which, by the way, has moved to town, which we're fortunate. And I think sponsorships continue to come in, but there could be more in terms of sponsorship to help the committee through its fundraising. So other than that, I think it's pretty much moving forward.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to add Charter Revision Committee to this report? Item H?
I think it's on the second.
All right. And we'll go right to the Town Manager's report.
At Permanent Project Building Committee last night, in addition to the actions on Stanley T. Williams, there were some further discussion about MBIS and trying to bring that project to closure. There are a couple of follow-up meetings that need to take place. And in all likelihood, by early June, there will be a meeting of the Building Committee, including an executive session with the attorney to attempt to bring closure to some of the claims, especially with the design team. So to our knowledge, that is moving forward, and there's a list of accountable bills that need to be brought to that table. The North Branford High School roof project, as Representative Candy Laura was speaking to about last summer's repairs, those will be addressed through a submission by the Board of Education with the notwithstanding language that was included in the legislation. Based on my previous reports to you about the RFQ for architectural services, the Building Committee has taken this item now off the agenda, because it does not have funding for the architects' selection and design services for the $1.2 million project. If you recall, in the capital request of the Board of Education, that was the amount that they submitted. The estimated design fees would be somewhere around the $100,000 to $110,000 figure, for which we have no appropriation. So the Building Committee's feeling was, when an appropriation is made, then we can continue with the RFQ process. And until that time, that project is pretty much closed for them. Final plans on the Swatchick Field and Wall Field project, relocation project, are moving forward. And I have to tell you that our town engineer and our Public Works Director have put in a great deal of time moving this project forward and making sure that all of their concerns are being addressed. So we're very appreciative of their commitment to the project. There was a question that was raised last night under Stanley T. in the status of the heating system, and whether an additional allocation of $15,000 or $20,000 was necessary. Some of the work had presumed to have been done by the Board of Education. It was, in fact, done by the Board of Ed, and there is an estimated balance remaining of about $10,000. All of the changes, or contemplated changes, that Councilor Angeloni was referring to earlier in the meeting, are all within the budget that's been established by the combination of the Town Council and the steep grant that was bid. So there's no additional funds that would be requested. It's all within that $496,000, I believe is the number. The town engineer and Public Works Director are coordinating micro paving in a section of town that will begin next week. I think good scheduling with the weather that we've had this week. So press releases going out on that, and information is available on the town's website. If I could just defer to the town engineer and/or the Public Works Director on the status of the Connecticut DOT Project 80 and 139 relocation. Kurt, you want to comment? You had a Utilities meeting today.
Yeah, we had a Utilities meeting today, and there was a tree clearing, well, a tree clearing meeting as well today. Basically, just in a nutshell, the contractor, the project is a guerrilla construction of Trumbull, Connecticut. They will be commencing work on the project starting next week. And as soon as they start, the first thing they do will be the tree clearing within the limits of all the grading of the project. So there'll be a significant visual impact for all the work they're doing. All the, basically, from the Tilcon Railroad Bridge easterly on that north side, there's a significant amount of clearing that has to take place. And that should all happen, a lot of this should happen pretty much next week. And along 139, there's additional clearing as well, to a lesser extent. But just so everybody's aware of it, that's the first thing you'll start to see beginning next week, the clearing. Once they do that, basically, there's a bunch of stages of construction, and I don't have an exact schedule from them yet. Basically, what they'll be doing is grading on the northeast side of Route 80. There's a significant, maybe about a four-foot cut in the road in front of the Central Plaza entrance on the Route 80. And it impacts utilities. Water mains and gas lines have to be relocated. So there's a bunch of stages that have to occur. But the first thing they'll do is they'll, they'll work on the north side, cutting into that and putting bypass lanes in. They'll be sending me a schedule, which I'll give to Rich, and we can pass it on in terms of, we have a little more detail. But that's really the first thing, just to make you aware of, to anticipate. And like I said, next week, you'll see a big visual change. Also, in front of the community center, there's four trees. Those are, you know, that's part of the, those will be cut down as part of the widening project. We're working to get them to put back three or four trees in front of there.
They're taking all the fence down from Wall Field, too, right?
Pardon me?
They're taking all the fence down from Wall Field.
The fence doesn't come down.
The road's gonna be that close to that?
They're back from there, there's a slope limit that's probably, I'm gonna guess, 10 feet back from the fence.
Or trees are there.
Right. That's about the limits of it. Some of those trees may come down, just because they have to do the grading on the slope. But that's pretty much the limit at this point. And again, I said, as soon as I have information, we'll pass it on and update you on it. But like I said, the big thing, just be prepared for change next week. It certainly will be noticeable. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Kurt, about another road in town, Cedar Lake Road. It's basically impassable. I mean, there's huge potholes in it. I know we just did the water work on that road. Do they have to wait for the houses to hook up to it, to redo it, or what? Because that road is in terrible condition.
Oh, yeah. It's terrible condition because of the work that was done. And we also put off work, knowing eventually that we'd be able to get the water main in there. Didn't want to do the work twice. The water line's in, there's a temporary patch over there. The contract should be going out very shortly for the service connections. That has to happen first. And then we have it programmed into the road improvements program.
I would hope it would be.
We want to tie the funding from the, that the state provided for road repairs to the water company into our work, when we're gonna do reconstruction work on Cedar Lake Road.
It's really, really bad.
But it has to occur, you know, it'll occur later this summer.
And it's not even actually probably legal width for a road, to be honest with you.
It narrows down at one point, but you're correct. The pavement is in a very rough shape during, in the middle of the section of it. But we've anticipated that. We've been waiting for this project to occur, and we'll be taking care, we'll be making significant movements in the road.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
When you do anything, can you widen that road at all? Or is it not?
We can widen a little bit. And that narrow spot.
For the tree at Junea verse houses is the big deal. You almost, two cars can't get by at the same time there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the tree will be coming down. We'll try to cut the roots back as far as we can. If we go too far, then we're gonna, you know, grade it.
You're gonna have to put a wall up and all that stuff.
Exactly. We don't have the funds to do that. And we'll be going a little bit on the other side to the root that we're taking out, trying to get the utility all relocated.
On the right.
When we can, in a difficult situation.
On the right-hand side, going from Twin Lakes Road, there's a real drop-off there. You won't put any of those, those metal things?
Both the, the guard rails at the end. I said, we're, we're gonna try to widen it as much as we can. And again, we have a lot of limitations on that.
I hate that road.
Move off that hill, try to scrape that off as best we can, but it's a very difficult location.
I know.
I know. It's a shortcut to my house.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Richard?
Just a couple more items to keep you up to date on. Our personnel recruitment for the emergency dispatcher is underway. The deadline for applications is this Friday, May 18th, and the response to date has been, has been very active. So, we're, we're excited about that. We did open two bids yesterday. The breathing air compressor, that was the subject of the fire act grant for the fire department. Three bidders came in on that. Those bids are under review between the fire chief and, and my office. And the solid waste collection and disposal bid, we had a combination of bids that were received, four bidders in total, but they, they were bidding in some cases on different things. So, it's a big project. There's a, a good deal of work that has to go into review those bids, and that review is underway with my office. Also, the public works director, as asked, was sought and received a, an estimate from a local demolition contractor using the town's equipment and labor rates for the demolition of a motto structure. And that's in conjunction with the court order that was issued. So, if it's within your pleasure this evening, there's an item on your desk tonight for a proposed motion to add to the agenda to allow us to move forward with that project that was discussed at the finance subcommittee. And I believe the mechanism that was established has been followed.
Is only one being added?
We use the equipment and labor rates that are the ongoing rates that we have.
What was the cost on that?
I think thirty-five and, and with a minor contingency. The request on your desk tonight is for a $40,000 not-to-exceed number, in case we run into anything. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the, the roof replacement at the high school. If it now comes under this, that we get reimbursement for it, and this money comes back to the town, can that money then be used to appropriate, to go ahead with phase, the next phase for architectural fees? Because this was money that we took out of the money that we had left over from the libraries, correct? And we just paid for it from those funds. So, this would be kinda newfound money coming back to us.
Any other questions?
Good. Community events and presentations. We already have the state representative here. Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
The community events, did we get an invitation from the VFW to participate in the parade or what? I don't, did we did?
The Memorial Day Parade is on Memorial Day. On behalf, we, we've been working with the VFW to coordinate the parade, as always. I think there, there should be a press release pending, or it, it was already sent out, I believe. But the invitation is open if you wanna make the announcement to the community for all participating groups to get in touch with the VFW. You can go on their website, or if, if necessary, call my office, and we'll put them in touch.
Tell me that they're, they're gonna be serving hot dog and hamburgers at the VFW hall after the parade. So, let people know that they can go there.
Look, Potter, 1251 Middleton Avenue. I had a quick suggestion and maybe a question. I know that the roof on the high school was kinda put on the back burner due to money funds. Now, now the funds are coming available, but what is the window? Or you're not, because the last time you guys got into this mess, they were still pouring tar as the school bus was pulling in, I believe, last year. Are you gonna get into that timeline crunch again this year, or can you go forward? Or you do, do you have to wait for all of the paperwork to follow? Or, I mean, do you have a contingency plan to move forward to the next phase? Because we were lucky. We had a quiet winter last year. But if we get a lot of snow and you get a lot more weight on that roof, I think it's gonna be very hard to make a repair in the middle of winter, if you need to. Because Al can tell you, right? When you walk on a, a tar roof in the winter, you just create the iceberg effect, and it flakes off. So, again, you know, you, you had to hold it off, but now you've gotten some money in it. It's important, because just like with the barn, if you save the roof, you're gonna save the school. Thanks.
Thank you, Cliff. Anyone else? Item seven, resignations and appointments. I have a motion for reappointment of Mary Bigelow to Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, term to expire six, two thousand fourteen. Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Reappointment, Joe Tenzar, Cable Advisory Council, South Central, term to expire June. Moved by Councilor Fucy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes. Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yep.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
C, reappointment, David Bowen, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item D, reappointment, Donna Cordon, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fucy, seconded by Councilor Wentworth. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yep.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
E, reappointment, Tom Scalvo, to the Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Eight, unfinished business, discussion and action. Item A, charter revision. The charter revision committee has been meeting on Thursdays. So far, we have made great progress. Some of the items were from our town clerk, and those items, we have put together language for. We're still working on the referendum and the town manager. However, item C two dash five, minority representation. C three dash two, terms of office. C three dash four, the Board of Education. C three dash five, registers of voters and justice for the peace. C three dash six, constables. C four dash six, public hearing on publication of ordinances. These items have been discussed, and I think we'll be moving forward. And we will be still working on the three, items C six dash one, C eight dash five. So.
You guys talking about election of fire commissions and police commissions still, or no?
I think that was, that was in here. That was in here. The committee did discuss it, but I don't think that moved forward from the committee.
So, they're still gonna be appointed, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It doesn't appear to be consensus supporting that change.
I wonder why?
There was a few different, I, you know, they brought up term limits were discussed in the election, and, yeah, that didn't.
You mean, they elect all of us? Why wouldn't they elect the fire commission and police commission? Let the people decide, I would think.
This will be coming to the council. So, I can certainly get the minutes from that meeting. You can review. I don't recall exactly, because so many discussions.
I think we're pretty much on target to deliver a recommended set of changes on time. But it's really all gonna be subject to town council review and acceptance or basically rejection. So, anything that either was, well, nothing was overlooked, but anything that the recommendation is not acceptable to the council as a whole, you certainly have the ability to override that and make a change.
So, I think, you know, we have a meeting this Thursday, and there's possibility that we could wrap up on Thursday.
Very close.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on charter revision? Item B, North Branford High School roof. And C, Stanley T. Williams Conversion Project. I mean, we discussed that as well in town manager's report.
Wallfield too?
In Wallfield. Item D, Switchick Park project. With this project, the steep grant on the additional $350,000, will that committee be meeting again? And, you know, discussing further phases? I'm sure Franny is happier.
I, I think what it does for this particular project is it allows us to, I put into the base bid more items that would have been ad alternates. The dugouts certainly were, were in there from the beginning, but the concession buildings and storage facility, you know, some of those.
Bathrooms.
The septic system that goes with it, additional parking lot lights, the field lights, all of those things are, that were going to be someday things or can now move forward. There's some additional drainage work that, that can be accommodated in this as well. But I, I believe the, the budget is pretty well-constrained, and at some point, there may indeed be a phase two. But we also have a game plan in mind for the long term. So, the public works department, under, under Fran's direction, has an idea of what they can continue to do, you know, for the next several winters. You know, there's a good, good deal of projects up there.
Item nine, new business discussion and action. Item A, solid waste management. I'm gonna ask that we table this this evening.
I'll move the table.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Fiscal year 2012-13 budget, establishment of the mill rate.
I got it right here.
I'll move the resolution that the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the 2012-13 fiscal year at 27.77 mills and further authorizes Richard Brandigan, Town Manager, to assign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July 1st, 2012, and January 1st, 2013.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
No.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item C, annual appointment of auditor. Suggested motion?
I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call?
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item.
Just as a point of clarification, that's tied to the proposed resolution that's in our packet, limiting their compensation to $32,000 for the upcoming year. Correct?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Item D, suspense list, 2012.
When, when does this have to be acted on? I mean, it wouldn't have to be acted on tonight, though?
Uh, there's no immediacy to it.
Well, it's just, there's a lot of, lot of names and stuff, and so it might be.
Should we table it?
I'd rather table it so I could take it home and read it. Maybe, maybe we can find some of these people.
I, I think it wouldn't be too hard.
No, don't confuse.
Right.
The, the act of adopting the suspense list does not in any way preclude us from going after these taxes.
Yeah, we're just.
Doesn't negate the taxes.
I'm okay with that.
We're basically saying, these look like problem taxes to collect. But if we can find these people, we can still go after them.
Right. And there's all different situations.
Accepting this list. Then what happens with this list after we accept it?
Gets given to the marshal, which in this case is Marshal Neil Longobardi, that the town attorney has recommended. He received a bunch of tax warrants about a month ago. Just follow the sequence. The second payment is due in January. In February, delinquent notices go out. In March, demands go out. And then in April and May, the sheriff gets the warrants, the marshal gets the warrants, and collects on those. These are additional ones that would be turned over to the marshal. They sometimes have more elaborate methodology than we have here. They may have skip tracing abilities, other, other ways of finding people that we cannot find. A lot of these you'll see on there are, are mail returns. As we, we talked about in the finance committee, we have a significant number of items that will come back. And a lot of times what happens, the majority of the problems are motor vehicle bills. When you go to register your car, you register it at 123 Main Street. However, you have a P.O. box. So, we send the bill to 123 Main Street, and it gets kicked back to the town, saying, no such number, no such mail, no mail receptacle. So, then we try to go through, you know, switchboard.com or other places to get the information, and sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not. So, a lot of these people probably are either still in town at other addresses, or may have moved out of town, which, again, someone with like a marshal probably has greater access to skip tracing capabilities and other ways of finding people than we do. This, as Benny meant, this is no way to negate these people's taxes, and Joe, this is just a turn to another, another part of the list.
So, you're telling us if we just return the mail, we, we don't get off scot-free?
Uh, no, you can try. Well, we, we do make an effort to.
I didn't know that was an option.
We do make an effort to locate. As I mentioned in finance also, the, the tax department and the assessor's office spends about 80% of their time on the motor vehicles, which is about 20% of the dollars. So, it's a tremendous inequity of the amount of effort they put into collecting such a little bit of, a bit of money. And it's just the nature of the beast and.
Especially on the deceased people.
Yeah, deceased people are hard to collect from.
They're hard, yeah?
Yeah. We do try to get ahold of, of the judge for Joan to see if there's anybody that has estates opened up. And perhaps you can give the bills to him if there are estates opened up, and he can process them that way. That's another option that we do use. We try to exhaust all means before they go into the suspense list.
The, the, the interesting reading for some of my friends over at the Board of Ed side here. In 2001, there was $13.42 on this list, and it goes up to, you know, $20,000 in 2009, and, you know. So, it's definitely not too rosy out there. Unless I read that wrong.
No, you're 100% right. No. I believe the finance side gave you the outstanding list for the various years as well. And, you know, there's from 2001 or two, there's a couple hundred dollars outstanding still. So, as, as things progress, we either clean the list up.
And then, and then if you go to the back page, the, I didn't count, it looks like must be somewhere around 20 people from 2005, '07, up to 2010 that went bankrupt.
Anthony, all the mail returns, the addresses are provided to the marshal?
The bills, copies of the bills are provided to the marshal and at that point, it's up to him to research them, whatever means he has access to.
Yeah.
It's the flawed system with motor vehicle where your car is registered, not the information that we get to create the bills with. So again, if you used your home address for the cars, but you have a mail, a P.O. box, it's never going to connect.
Then the only other comment I have is there's like two pages. This is for the, this is for the.
Businesses.
Couple hundred people that came out and wanted to vote to raise more taxes, you know, a couple pages of businesses that went out of business in town, too.
That's correct.
All right, I have no problem with accepting this as the list of people that have, I thought we were just giving up on them and.
Oh, no, certainly not. Certainly not. As I mentioned to you in finance as well, what's going to happen probably at the June meeting is the collector is compiling a list of folks who have significant real estate bills that he's going to present to the council to go on to the next step through the town attorney's office or further action that way. As I mentioned also, we try to be as amicable as possible with our taxpayers and not be, you know, aggressive in our collection means, but there comes a point when you have multiple years outstanding that we need to do something.
Thank you, Anthony. So I have a motion by the deputy mayor to approve the suspense list. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item E, appropriation transfer.
Deputy Councilor Angeloni hit these on the head before, the largest one being the fire department, the way the stipends are budgeted. And again, that was corrected for the 12-13 budgets, so this large transfer will not take place going forward.
Some of the appropriation transfers.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item F, financial report, April 30th, 2012.
The financial picture of the town continues to be very stable. On the top half of the page, you'll notice the revenue section appears to be significantly out of whack with last year, you know, very far ahead. However, what the implication was, the state education cost sharing grant that typically comes in, in May 1st, came on April 30th this year. So that's why the current year's number is significantly ahead of last year. Absent that, we'd still be ahead of last year's pace. On the expenditure side of the house, a couple new departments are showing over expended. Technology department, a lot of that's tied up in POs, as is the fire department. And I know the fire chief is working with the accounts payable clerk to close out some POs to free up some money to get his account back into balance. Aside from that, the report's unremarkable. Again, the bottom line expenditure, 79.3% current year compared to 80.2% last year. So we're a little bit below expenditures, which is a good thing, and a little bit ahead of revenues, which is a very good thing as well. Things are going well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
It's almost remarkable.
You know, it is. It is. It's, 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 yeah, true. True. It's, it's a good thing.
No, I'm, I'm proud of everybody that pays their taxes.
The additional ECS money that State Rep Candy Laura talked about.
Yes.
Did we include any of, did we know about any of that and did we include any of that in our budget revisions?
The number that he referred to, I think about half of that went into budget next year.
Okay.
If I recall. So about half will be surplus revenue.
G, approval of tax refunds.
I'll move the approval of tax. Second.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Citizen statements.
I want to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item H, the Amato's building demolition memo that was at our desk.
Okay, moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. That was to add this to the agenda.
It's to add it to the agenda.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
My only, I have a concern on that and I don't know if I'm off-base on it or not, but I just don't want to get into this thing of superseding our bidding process by going with, how can I say it?
That town bids.
Town bidding, or labor rates, you know? We get labor rates, we're not getting a broad, a broad scope of people bidding on our services and we start, we start superseding our bidding process or our town charter by going with these proposed labor rates. And who knows who's going to submit them and who knows what they're for. I thought when we were submitting labor rates, they were for emergencies or, you know, below $7,500 would blow our bid scope. So, you know, I foresee problems if we continue down this road.
I agree with Mike, but also looking at this, I think that, I think this number is big enough now where it should be bid and that's a pretty simple thing to write a bid spec for. And that company is welcome to bid it, too. But I, I think that we should go to bid on it. If we've accepted that we're going to do it, I think we need to go to bid on it. Sounds fine to me. I know who else. I know that. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I could provide some background, and we briefed the finance committee last week on this. This is a project that we did have estimates from contractors and we knew that we were going to be in this ballpark. We were looking at alternative means of doing this particular project because there's a great likelihood that the town will have to put out a significant amount of money and not be reimbursed for some period of time because this may in fact lead to a lien on the property. Therefore, a decision was made a few, a month or two ago to have Public Works be the coordinating lead agency to try and take the building down pretty much ourselves. Unfortunately, the Public Works Department and the town does not have a demolition license. So the building official was kind enough to check that with the state and that is a requirement. So we, in essence, this is a project that still is a public works project supplemented just as we would with snow plowing or something else, in this case with a licensed demolition contractor who has equipment and labor rates that are under our bid schedule. So if it's the council's wish to, for us to repackage this and put it out to bid, we can certainly do that. Our hope was to get this thing resolved fairly soon.
I think it should still go to bid. I mean.